Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I will call to meet, to order the zoning board of appeals meeting for Wednesday, October 11th, 2023. To all persons interested in or affected by the actions of the zoning board, you're hereby notified pursuant to section 11 of chapter 48 of the general laws of commonwealth of Massachusetts and all amendments thereto, that a public hearing on the following appeals will be held, are being, is being held on October 11th, 2023, 7:00. The meeting will be televised live via Xfinity Channel 8 or high definition channel 1072. It may also be accessed via the government access channel livestream on the Barnes, Town of Barnstable's website, http://streaming85.townofbarnstable.us/cable, I mean, yeah, cable cast, public site backslash watch backslash one question mark, channel equals one. I'll now introduce the board members. You can say your name, you know, like we used to before Zoom.
I'm Manny Alves.
Denise Johnson.
I'm Herb Bodenseek.
Paul Penard.
Aaron Webb.
Okay. Notice of recording, this meeting of the zoning board of appeals is being recorded and broadcast on the Town of Barnstable's government access channel. In accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20, I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting, and if so, to please make their presence known. Seeing none, we'll proceed. Minutes, we have none to approve. Old Business Appeal Number 2023-10, Arista Hyannis LLC has applied for special permit in accordance with section 240-25B22 and 240-25C10, drive-through for a proposed rest run. The applicant proposes to remodel the former bank building and change the use to a food service establishment with a drive-through. The subject property is located at 715 West Main Street, Hyannis, Mass., as shown on assessor's map 249 as parcel 155. It is located in the Hyannis Business District HB, continued from May 10th and July 26th, 2023, and September 13th. Members assigned were Jake Dewey, Paul Penard, Mark Hanson, Eric Bodenseek, and myself. Do we have anybody here representing Arista?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the --
There we go, try that again. Good evening, again. For the record, my name is Eliza Cox. I'm an attorney with the firm of Nuttner McLennan &amp; Fish. We have submitted a letter to the board requesting that this matter be continued without testimony to the November 8th hearing of the board. As, I don't want to give, I'll give a little background to give some context to the request, but I don't want to substantively get into the case. As the board will recall, at the first hearing that was had in May, there was a decision and a vote to engage a peer review to analyze the transportation report that was submitted with the application. That review is ongoing. We've had one initial conversation with the peer reviewer who was selected, and then there've been some back and forth with a few emails, and then a memo that we received on the 29th of September. We reached out the Monday after receive, that was a Friday, that we received that report, and I think the board got the report. And it asks for additional information and clarification from our engineer, who is in the process of preparing a response. And so, we'd like to come back to you, and I think the whole idea was to come back with a final report from your peer reviewer, which they're awaiting, this information that we will be providing this week to them. I would also say, in selecting the date of November 8th, we have also confirmed with the peer reviewer through Mr. Cutford that they are available to attend the hearing that day.
I think we had kind of a full schedule on the 8th, Anna?
We do have five on the agenda, and one of the items is a 40B.
Okay. Would December 6th possibly be? Looks like Thanksgiving is getting in the way.
Yeah, we actually, we worked with the chair, who I know isn't here today, to see if there was an opportunity for a special meeting of the board, and I know there quorum issues, so it sounds like that wasn't something that was possible. I mean, I, our preference is to move forward as quickly as we can, once we have the final report from the peer reviewer, which we're, you know, trying to obtain. If you can't take us on the 8th, and that's the first time you can take us, I don't know if the peer reviewer is available for that meeting in December. We did confirm, as I mentioned, the November meeting, that they would be available.
Any input on that, Anna? You don't have a microphone, so we'll use sign language.
When, when did you inform the board that we were going to take this off the agenda today?
We informed the board on, I have that date down, Monday, October 2nd. So, we received the additional memorandum from the peer reviewer and had conversations with the town staff to, that we weren't going to go forward this yet, this evening.
I didn't see it till today, and there were a lot of people in the public that planned to attend.
As I mentioned, we were working with Mr. Dewey to see if we could find another date for the board to meet, preferably in person was our request, and we just found out on, yesterday, that weren't able to obtain a quorum, any other dates except for what you have scheduled. So, the letter that we submitted was dated yesterday, but the conversations were happening over 10 days ago.
Okay, but that didn't give the public much, much notice.
We, well, I apologize, but we were, as I said, we were working with the town staff to try and find a date that would work for the continuance.
Is there anybody from the public that's come to see this? Okay, that's good. Okay. So, Anna, yes or no on November 8th?
It's up to the board.
So, I have one quick question. Is there a, forgive my ignorance here, but is there a timetable for how long our meetings can go?
We have been signing extensions to allow the public hearing process to continue. So, if, if your question is, are you in jeopardy of a constructive grant because of the timeframes that are set out forth under the statute, with the continuances, we have been signing extensions of that timeframe.
I think he meant the duration of--
Well, yeah, and the duration of a meeting. I mean, can we be here till midnight?
Oh, oh, that's a question--
I don't know the, I just don't know the answer.
No, there may be--
It's open-ended.
There may be. Yeah.
Is that going to be an in-person meeting?
So, November 8th, my understanding is remote, and I believe the rest of this calendar year, this board is remote at this time. We certainly could work with the chair to try and get an in-person meeting between now and the end of the calendar year.
I think this particular thing, we need to be able to see the illustrations and things like that.
Agreed, and staff had recommended to the applicant, and I believe the applicant agreed that, you know, the general consensus was in-person would be preferable. My recommendation perhaps is to continue the matter to November 8th, with the understanding that we're going to be working on a date that's just beyond November 8th for an in-person meeting, because you, we simply can't continue to a date certain and then come to an earlier, come and convene earlier than that. So, if you continue to November 8th, and, and staff can work with, with the chair to try and work on a date that might work for this board to convene in person, I think that might be a reasonable next step.
Okay, it sounds like November 8 should work.
And to be clear, that was what we had requested from the start, that we find a date where we could do an in-person meeting.
But we, a question of, and this is vaguely related, okay? If we want to vote, if we want to vote to have in-person meetings, we can do that, right? You don't need 48 hours. Two weeks?
Probably about five weeks.
So--
To change to an in-person meeting?
Well, I mean, the legal ads, the notices.
So, if we wanted to start off next year in person, what's the drop-dead date to make a decision this year? Next meeting?
We've missed it.
Well, we missed that, missed that, five weeks. Yeah, right.
So, generally, we've been doing the first meeting--
Right.
--in person and the--
Right.
--second meeting Zoom.
Right.
In January, the school committee has this room, the first, what would be our first in-person meeting. So, we made the two January meetings Zoom.
Okay, maybe, Mr. Chairman, if I may, could you shoot a message out to the board that, that explains that, so that if we want to have in-person meetings, we have to vote by a certain date in January or December?
Well, in February--
Yeah.
--the, the first meeting is, is in person.
Right, but we need to make the decision in January.
Or December.
Or, yeah, sooner than that.
That's what I mean. If you could put a message out to say, here's the drop-dead date, if you want to start in-person meetings in February.
The issue was that I, that the quorum, there was a quorum issue, and then there was a location issue. Some, sometimes this--
Well, you said January, we can't have the room, right?
We can't have the room, we cannot have the room, the first meeting in January.
Right, so I'm talking about February, okay?
February, we've got the room.
If in February we wanted to start the meetings in person--
Yep.
--there's a specific date in December that we have to make the decision by?
Well, we have to reserve the room right away, so nobody else reserves it. So, the sooner the better.
Well, that's up to the chairman. I'm sorry, I've taken you off, off track here, I didn't mean to. Maybe we could just hold this until we--
Yeah, why don't we discuss this at the end of the meeting? Because it's work discussion.
Okay, I'm sorry about that, I was just--
I just have one more comment real quick. Is the November 8th, is this room booked on November 8th? But we can't switch from Zoom to in-person? Yeah, we got a problem, because I think, again, this hearing needs to be, in everyone's opinion, in-person.
And that is our preference, so I actually think Jim's suggestion, if the board is inclined, is a really good one, to continue this to November 8th, with the understanding that between now and that date, we will work to find an in-person date that works, and then on November 8th, the board will continue this matter to that date that we've all agreed on, which will be in-person. So, you'll announce that on November 8th, the public will therefore have notice of it, and then we'll have the meeting in person.
That sounds reasonable, so we have about a month to figure out another--
Yeah, exactly.
And yet, but, yeah, but for legal, five weeks, you know, we got to figure that out.
Well, for this one, you don't have to re-advertise.
I understand, but again, a special meeting, everything else, their advertising has to happen. So, anyway, yeah, we got work to do. Okay, great, thank you.
I'm in favor of a special meeting, I suppose.
Do you want a motion on this?
Well, I think I have to, somebody has to make a motion to continue this to November 8th--
Right, yeah.
--or a date of our choosing.
So, I make a motion to continue this to 7:00 on the November 8th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
That's better than Zoom right there.
Well, hopefully, we can find a date. Okay.
Okay, now, on to new business. Appeal Number 2023-025, Richard and Catherine Ventura, trustees of Ventura Family Trust have applied to modify special permit number 2014017 to allow for the, for site alterations. The applicant proposes to construct a 22-foot attached garage, relocate it, relocate the gravel driveway, and remove planting as, plantings as needed. Reposed maximum lot coverage ratio would be 24.1, and the proposed gross floor, floor area would be 25%. The subject property is located at 64 Commerce Road, Barnstable, Mass., as shown on assessor's map 301 as parcel 051. It is located in the residence B, RB, and the residence F1, RF1 zoning districts. Now, do you have any desire to do this special permit and the variance at the same time, or you want to do it--
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I was going to suggest that.
Okay, I will read then, appeal number 2023-26. Richard and Catherine Ventura, trustees of the Ventura Family Trust, have petitioned for a variance pursuant to section 240-91H, non-conforming lot. The petitioner seeks a variance from the 20% maximum lot coverage requirement to build a 20 by 22-foot attached garage, which would result in a maximum lot coverage ratio, rather, of 24, 24.1%. The petitioner proposes to remove the existing gravel driveway and construct a new gravel driveway to provide vehicular access to the garage. The subject property is located at 64 Commerce Way, Commerce Road, Barnstable, Mass., as shown on assessor's map 301 as parcel 051. It's located in the residence B, RB, and the residence F1, RF1 zoning districts. Okay. You may proceed.
Mr. Chairman--
Oh, I need to assign members.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm gonna, let's see, I'll start from the left. Mark, Denise, myself, Paul, and you're a regular member, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, everybody except you, Manny.
Won't take it personally.
Please don't. I mean, please do. Kidding, kidding. Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning board of appeals, for the record, my name's John Kenny, I'm an attorney with a law office in Centerville. Come before you tonight, representing Richard and Catherine Ventura, who are the trustees of Ventura Family Trust. Rich and Kathia are here with me. You can just kind of raise your hands there. Also here with me is Matt Eddy, the engineer on the project from Baxton Eye Engineering. And Steve Cook has a historic commission meeting, but he will be here eventually, so he assures me. The Venturas have owned this property since, had an interest in this property since the early 1990s. They came before you, before this board back in 2014, requesting a special permit to allow them to tear down the existing house on the property and build a new house. And all of this was part of their retirement plan. This home is eventually going to be their permanent retirement home, they're going to sell their home off Cape and move down here. And they were doing this project in stages. They tore down the existing home, built the current home that's on the property, and with the idea of eventually adding a garage. And the home was designed specifically so they could add the garage, you can go from the garage into the mudroom into their, into their home. They are now in a situation where they're getting towards retirement. They had the economic resources to move forward with the garage. When they started with the garage, they suddenly became aware of the issue of lot coverage. They had no clue really what lot coverage is, no understanding of it. Looking at their lot in comparison to other lots within the neighborhood, looked like they had plenty of land to do what other people in the neighborhood have done. So, they were proceeding along the path of putting the garage and getting ready to kind of retire. I don't, I don't want to push them into retirement, but they're, they're working their way towards retirement, selling their home off Cape and moving into this, into this property. The garage is a 22-by-22-foot garage, the storage, storage area above. They need the storage area because there's no basement on this property. They have a, a nonusable crawl space under the property, given the proximity to the, to the wetlands and the ocean, et cetera. The water table in this area really isn't conducive to a, to a basement. In order to get the garage, they need a variance from section 24091H1B1 for lot coverage. And you're authorized to grant the variance under 48, Section 10, and chapter 240, Section 125B1C of our zoning ordinance, if you find it owing to, owing to circumstances related to soil conditions, shape, or topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located. A literal enforcement of the provisions of the zoning ordinance would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner, and desirable relief may be granted, without substantial detriment to the public good, without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance. And the property fronts on two roads, Commerce Road and Second Way. Although properties along Commerce Road between Millway and Harvey share these unique characteristics, these circumstances do not generally affect the zoning district in which the property is located. The shape of this property is uniquely attributable to the generous layout of Commerce Road. If you look at Exhibit-- I can't get to it. D of my memorandum, you can kind of see the layout of Commerce Road. It's coming along, and it kind of veers, if you look at the southerly lot line of Commerce Road, you can see it kind of veers towards my client's property and into, into the, into the, what they have always considered to be their front yard. So, that is a unique characteristic, and it creates a large area of green space between the edge of pavement and the lot, lot line of the property. And this gap is significant. I'm sorry?
Oh, she is, thank you.
Do you want me to wait in the stands?
It's okay.
Okay. So, as I stated, the, the shape of the property is uniquely attributed to the generous rela, layout of Commerce Road in, in the large gap. Located, the property, the road is located between Marispin Creek Wetlands and the subdivision. In the subdivision, the, the road dates back to eight, at least 1856, because it's located on the Walling maps. And it was laid out by the town in 1992. And given the age of the road and the location, with the creek, et cetera, this is very unlikely to change. The first trees, the property is, is butted along Commerce Road and Second Way by evergreen trees. The trees were planted pre-1968, as you can see by Exhibit F to my memorandum, the trees are there. And by the early 1980s, these trees had grown, and there's a beautiful vegetated buffer along Commerce Road and Second Way, protecting the property from the, the noise and the lights of the traveled ways. The fact that the green buffer exists, and the fact that it appears to be part of the property itself, is a unique circumstance relating to the property and not the zoning district generally. A literal enforcement of the zoning ordinance, the 20% maximum lot coverage requirement, would involve a substantial hardship in that it would preclude, preclude the construction of the attached garage. As I stated, this is their retirement home, they have no storage, an unusable crawl space, and as we get older, we want to be able to pull into a garage and walk into our home, not park and run, run through the weather elements. Desirable relief may be granted, without substantial detriment to the public good, without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance. The intent behind the 20% maximum lot coverage requirement is to ensure that there's a certain level of uniformity in, in development. Essentially, going back to the 1980s, it was designed to prevent McMansions having a very large home next to a couple of single-family ranches. Aesthetically speaking, any, anybody that observes the property would expect that the boundaries of the property run along the edge of Commerce Road and Second Way where the grass is. The fact that the layout runs through the front yard, or that the green buffer, the green buffer area of the land is within the road layout, road layout is not apparent from any viewpoint of the properties, you can see from the photos we submitted. Any view from Commerce Road or Second Way would include the buffer and vice versa. And my, my clients have been maintaining this area for over 30 years, and when you look back over the history of the property, it's been maintained since pre-1968, when those shrubs were, were put in. So, it's impossible to disregard the impact of the green buffer when assessing the overall structural development of the property. The maximum lot coverage proposed for the garage with respect to the property, when you include the green buffer, is actually 19.8%. It meets the zoning requirements. We are at 24% because we don't own that, but I'm calling it the effective lot coverage, because when you look at this, it's part of their lot, and it's been that way since going, it's been part of this lot going back for 50 years. A variance from the 20% lot coverage would not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of, of the ordinance, namely, again, the uniformity of structural development. It's an acceptable level of development, it's consistent with the neighborhood. The 20% lot recor, coverage requirement indicates that the relief in the form of variance may be granted, without substantial detriment to the public good, in that if this was a vacant lot, and they wanted to pull permits to build the house that exists and the garage, they could do it as of right. The 20% lot coverage would not apply to a vacant lot. So, this is a project that, even if you take away that green space, would meet all setback requirements. The only thing it doesn't meet is a 20% maximum lot coverage. They thought it did because of the, of the way the, the green buffer impacts their property. So, I would suggest to you that you can easily grant this without derogating from the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance. As I stated, it would be as of right if it, if it were vacant lot. And regarding the amendments to the special permit, we're simply asking to eliminate number three, the first sentence, which says that the total lot coverage shall not exceed 18%, and the floor area ratio should not exceed 27%. The floor area ratio is actually 25%. The new, the new lot coverage would be the 24% with the garage. And then the proposed redevelopment shall represent full build-out of the lot. Further expansion of the dwelling or construction of additional accessory structures is prohibited without prior approval from the board. And so, we're asking you to approve the, the further development of this property with a 22-by-22 garage. And I'll be happy to take any questions the board may have.
Anybody? What size garage would it take to get to 20%? I mean, with the house on it right now, what's the lot area ratio?
Matthew, have those--
Sorry, for the record, Matthew Eddy, professional engineer with Baxton Eye Engineering surveying. As far as, we did look at a smaller garage that would then meet, but it was, would definitely be a very narrow, single-car garage. It was something that just didn't work for the applicant, and just was not then considered, it just, it wasn't working, they weren't going to be able to go forward with that, so.
We'd leave him with one car and basically little to no storage.
At the most.
Very small car. Anyone have any further questions?
Yeah, you had a, I'd like to follow up, and your question is-- The lot itself now, excluding the buffer area, that's the, that's not part of the lot.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we know what the lot coverage is?
The existing lot coverage?
Yeah.
Yep. It's, it's on your, it's on sheet C 2.0 in that table, the existing lot coverage is 18.8%.
So, you want to go from 18.8 to 24.1?
Correct.
Okay. Now, in terms of the floor area ratio--
Yeah.
--that meets both ways?
Yes, yep. The floor area ratio with the proposal before you is 25.0%, where 30% is allowed.
Yep, okay. So, the whole issue is going from 18.8 to 24.1?
Just the lot coverage piece, correct.
That, that's the sole issue, as I stated, we meet all setback requirements as well.
Sorry, I know that in our notes, we did receive the information, the lot size is .21 of an acre?
Yeah, it's a--
Yes, that's correct.
9,193 square feet, so it's under the 10,000--
And how big is the home that's, that's currently sitting on the property?
Currently, the existing square footage, this is total square footage, not footprint.
Sure.
This is floor, floor area.
I have 2434, Matt, 2,434.
While existing right now is 1,889, proposed would be 2,300.
Gotcha.
Quick question, it shows, it's just hard to tell on, on this, because it's a little bit blurry, but is there, there's a current driveway, correct?
Correct.
And is that a paved driveway, is that an impervious?
It's a gravel driveway.
Gravel driveway currently. Okay, so there's nothing that's going to be removed, I'm sure you went through it all where--
So, there's two driveways now, there's one in the back or the side.
Yeah, so actually--
And there's one in the front, one off Commerce and one off Second.
But yeah, you have, is the existing driveway that comes off of Second Way, that's going to be removed and relocated to where the addition is proposed for the garage. And then there is a small existing gravel drive onto Commerce, that's proposed to be removed also. So, again, that's a benefit, there's two current driveways, they'll both be closed, and you'll end up with one, so there will be a reduction.
So, the access to the garage will be off Second?
Correct.
The proposed garage will be off Second?
Correct, yeah.
Any other questions?
I have one more real quick. The set, the, the current driveway that's there off of Second is the main driveway as we speak?
Yes.
So, it's not as if we're going to add, you know, by adding the garage and the driveway on the second half, going to change the dynamic of--
That's, that's--
Flow.
That's correct, and I did review that with the DPW as well, and they were fine with the driveway relocation.
And it eliminates the curb, got driveway on-- And it eliminates the curb, got driveway on to Commerce, which is the more heavily traveled road.
Yeah, I can't, I didn't realize that was actually a driveway there, but yeah.
It's just, it's hard to see from our...
Very. Yep. Okay. I'm good.
Anybody else?
Still no public comment?
I guess, do we have any public comment? There's a number of correspondence we have in the package here, but anybody wish to speak? Okay. I'll move to close public comment then.
Do we need, we need to read into the record?
Do we need to read all those in? Oh.
Person's name and whether they are opposed.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to do that if you want.
Do you have it there?
I do. Sure, why not? Take a little pressure off. I'm going to open them, I'm going to open them one by one here. Just got to let the wheels spin. So the first letter we received was dated Wednesday, October 11th. It came to Chairman Jake Dewey. It is from Laura, excuse me if I pronounce your names wrong, Bill Berry and Jonathan Gilmore. They are 10 Second Way in Barnstable Village, Rich and Kathy Ventura of 64 are neighbors, and we have an opportunity to review their proposed plan, and we are in support. So that is one letter of support. The second one comes from, sorry, wheel's spinning. On behalf of property owners Kathy and Richard Ventura, I wish to let you know, members of the committee, that I am in full support of the proposed building of the project at above address. The author's name is Martha Grun, 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 I believe, don't have an address, 34 Second Ways, her address, letter was dated October 10th. The third letter of public comment. There it is. It's a little quicker. Comes from a, it was dated October 11th, 6 First Way, Mary Ann Tryon, Tryon. I've had the opportunity to review the plans for the garage addition, and I am in full support of Richard and Kathy Ventura. The next one comes from, I believe, Bassett. Evelyn Bassett, dated October 9th. I don't see an address. We own the property 24 Second Way. We are in favor of the plans of Kathy and Richard Ventura for 64 Commerce. And Bonnie is next, I believe, Hannah. Next one comes from a gentleman, West Bonnie, dated October 10th. We are located at 45 Sunset Lane and have been there since 1970. We've seen the changes to the neighborhood, and we do not find it detrimental to the area. We have reviewed the plans of the Ventura's garage, and we are in full support of the project. And lastly, Richard's email dated Monday, October 9th. We live on 31 Second Way of Barnstable Village, Richard and Kathy Ventura of 64 Commerce Way are neighbors, and we've had the opportunity to review their proposed plans for garage on their property. We support their project and ask the ZBA to grant the relief requested to build the garage. Janice and Bruce Richards. And that's all the public comment we received via email.
Thank you for volunteering that.
You're welcome.
Okay. Now I will move to close public comment.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, is there any board discussion? I mean, I would ask...
Well, I mean, at this point, I'm just, just as a comment, I think closing out the cut Commerce Way is probably within something that's going to be a benefit to the public. This is probably the smallest request for addition or any type of alteration we've had in the area in some time. Certainly within the scope of the size of the dwelling. And again, I can see where they may have had the, the understanding where this land may have been part of their, part of their parcel. And is this, is this, I'm assuming this is, the trees are specific to this property? They don't continue along or anything of that nature?
I didn't see them anywhere else. I think maybe one of the properties next to them might have had some, but it's not, not the general vicinity.
Okay. I don't think they're asking for anything crazy.
I see the lot ratio is a little bit high, 24.1%.
It would be normally, but I mean, these, it's also on the edge of, it's not like there's a butter on that side.
Yeah, where he came in with a, if, if the town would just give you that property.
We understand.
Give you adverse possession.
It does make sense. We normally have more of an issue where there is a direct butter to one side or the back. In this case, we've got a road to one side, we've got a road to the front. I don't see how this is a detriment.
Yeah, I think in the case that it's, it is 24.1%. But as you pointed out, it's 19.8, I think you said, if you include that buffer area.
19.8 is correct.
I think the, I agree with you, Mark. The eliminating the access to Commerce Way, which is a major street in that area across from Metekee's Wharf and the Whale Watch and everything, would be an improvement in safety, if you will, on Commerce Way.
Anyone else? Okay. Would anybody like to make findings?
I've done my part. Here.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Hanson, I'd like to see you with those red glasses on.
Okay. Hang on here for a moment. Okay. This is appeal number, my findings on appeal number 2023-025, where Richard and Kathleen, Catherine Ventura, trustees of the Ventura Family Trust, have applied to modify special permit number 214-014 to allow for site alterations. They want to construct a 22 by 22 attached garage, relocate the gravel driveway. Would increase the maximum lot coverage from 18.8 to 24.1%. And the proposed gross floor area meets the requirements. Subject property is located at 64 Commerce Road, Barnstable, Mass. As shown on assessment map 301 as parcel 051, located in the Residence B, RB, and the Residence F1, RF1 zoning district. I find that the application falls within the category specifically accepted by this chapter. Two, I find that the evaluation of all evidence presented at the public hearing by the petitioner and interested parties as it relates to fulfillment and the spirit and intent of this chapter without substantial detriment to the public good or the neighborhood affected. And that's certainly witnessed by the six letters of support. Number three, the proposed alteration expansions are not substantially more detrimental to the environment, community, and all historic character of the house, of the character of the neighborhood than the existing building or structure. And I find that this increases the safety aspects of the traffic pattern. And so those are my findings with conditions.
Okay. I will second that. All in favor of those findings?
Aye.
Okay. Yeah, special conditions are 1 through 6 in staff report dated October 3, 2023. Have you seen these, Attorney Kenny?
Yes, we have, and they're acceptable.
They're acceptable? Okay. Those, those are the conditions?
Okay. I will move to accept those conditions. Do I have a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, you have the special permit, and then moving on to the variance.
Shall I continue?
Yes, please.
Okay. This concerns appeal number 2023-026 Ventura. Richard and Kathleen Ventura, trustees of the Ventura Family Trust, have petitions for variance pursuant to Section 240-91H, non-conforming lot. The petitioner seeks a variance from the 20% maximum lot coverage requirement to build a 22 by 22 attached garage. That would result in a maximum lot coverage of 24.1%. The findings, my findings are that owing to the circumstances related to soil condition, shape, or topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located, I find that it does not, that because of the shape, the topography of the lot, that, that it generally doesn't affect the zoning district in which it's located. Second, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the zoning ordinance would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner. Yeah, I mean, if they didn't, if we couldn't put a two-car garage in there and had to, and didn't grant the variance, the single-car garage wouldn't work. And therefore, it would be left with traffic still in Commerce and not directed toward Second Way. Number three, desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance. And the location of this lot, and certainly supported by the number of neighbor supports or letters of support, I find that it is still keeping within the, that it has no impact upon the neighborhood. Those are my findings.
Okay. I would add to number one, just that the buffer zone adds, what is, what do you call effective area? I would agree with that, and I'd add that to the findings.
Effective lot coverage rate? 19.8%.
Would bump it up to 24.1%.
Yep. Or it could be under 20, just, just under 20.
Right.
I will second your motion to accept those findings. All in favor?
Aye.
You have your variance as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Oh, conditions? Wait a minute. You thought you'd get away that?
Not quite yet.
I have conditions. I have conditions 1 through 5 on the staff report dated October 3, 2023.
Could you read those off, please? I don't have, I was looking to see if I had them in front of me, so.
Okay. Sure. We can, we can get your copy too.
I have it right here.
Want me to pinch hit?
You need it?
No, she's putting it up.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, no, I got them, but Attorney Kenny doesn't have them. Attorney Kenny?
1, 2, and 3 are fine. Those conditions are acceptable. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Then those are the five, five conditions on staff report dated October 3, 2023. Those are my conditions.
Okay, I will move that we accept those conditions. Do I have a second?
Second?
And all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you again.
Okay. Appeal number 2023-027. Anne LaFrance has applied for a special permit pursuant to Section 240-91H3, developed lot protection, demolition and rebuilding on non-conforming lots. The applicant seeks to demolish the existing dwelling and construct a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling. The proposed project will result in a reduction in the existing lot coverage from 2,665 square feet to 2,659 square feet. And we'll have a gross floor area of 2,875 square feet, where 2,995 square feet, 30% would be the maximum. The subject property is located at 175th Street, Fifth Ave, rather, Hyannis Ave, Mass. As shown on the assessment map 245, parcel 115. It's located in the Residence B, RB, zoning district. Oh, hello again.
Mr. Chairman, you have to select members again.
Thank you, thank you. I usually let Jake do that, but, okay, all the regular members and how about Manny? All right.
Who are all the regular members?
Oh, that would be myself, Paul Pinnard, Mark Hanson, and Aaron Webb.
Okay. I'm sorry, I thought Ms. Johnson was a regular member, so didn't mean to exclude you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the zoning board of appeals, for the record, my name's John Kenny, Attorney at Law Office in Centerville. I come before you tonight representing Anne LaFrance. Anne is with me here. Anne, if you could wave your hand back there. Also here with me, I didn't see him sneak in earlier, is Attorney Patrick Nickerson from my office. We're still awaiting Mr. Cook, but I'll address his issues as we go along. Not his issues, his input. My client has owned the property since 1993. She is seeking a special permit pursuant to Section 240-91H3 to allow her to tear down the existing dwelling and construct a new two-story, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath, single-family residence with a one-car garage and a covered porch totaling 2,875 square feet. The lot contains 10,006 square feet. The subject property was created by an 1893 plan recorded in the registry of deeds, and the assessors' records have the main house as being built. It says 1890, but I'm guessing it was sometime around 1893, since that's when the subdivision plan went on record. The zoning for this area, based upon research provided to us by staff, thank you, Anna, the lot and the construction of the home predated the adoption of zoning. In 1956, the lot was zoned, RA1, requiring a minimum lot size of 7,500 square feet. And we had 10,006 square feet. But it also required 20 feet side and rear setbacks of seven and seven, seven and one-half feet. So the zoning change in 1956 rendered the structure non-conforming. It was, as it was not in compliance with the setback requirements. In 1970, the subject property was rezoned to RB with 10,000 square foot minimum lot size. And then in '85, it became one acre. That's when the actual lot became non-conforming. The structure, as I said, was built in 1890, sometime in the 1890s. We have no record date of the construction of the garage. And when you look at Exhibit D, the aerial photo, you really can't make out the garage. But we have neighbors that will come here and testify that it was, that they were in this area before 1976. And actually, some, one gentleman next door, his family bought the property in 1969, and the garage was there. We also submitted yesterday an affidavit. We're trying to kind of button down this issue and ask Steve Cook to go and inspect the garage and give us his professional opinion. Steve Cook from Katuapay Design, who designed the house. And according to Steve's affidavit, it's a bond-style construction. It has full-dimensional lumber with sawmill marks visible. There's vertical sheeting for the walls and horizontal sheeting for the roof. So he estimates, based upon the style of construction, the lumber, as you can see there, the vertical and horizontal sheeting and the saw marks on the wood, he estimates that it's actually pre-1950s, which is kind of consistent with some other opinions, and you may hear from somebody else tonight that will confirm that. So with the 1893 structure, there was an addition sometime between '76 and '85. We could not find permits for that, but it was done by the prior applicant. And in 1996, my client, after acquiring the property, renovated the renovation and turned the, the renovation between '76 and '85 was to add a second garage and attach the main house to the second garage and the existing garage. And the purpose for that second garage was And the purpose for that second garage was for a boat. The gentleman who owned the property was storing his boat there. When my client bought the property, she doesn't have a boat, so she converted that into a sunroom in 1996, and permits were pulled for that conversion. So as I stated, was now seeking a special permit to demolish the legal pre-existing nonconforming structure and replace it with a new similar, similar and slightly smaller structure on a similar and smaller footprint. Because we don't comply with all current setback requirements of the RB zoning district, we have to go to 240-91H1A, which then sends us to 240-91H3. 240, let me just back up a little. Section 241-25C authorizes you to grant the special permit, provided you find that the ordinance specifically authorizes the granting of this special permit in any particular section. Section 240-91H contains two separate sections which allow for demolition and rebuilding on nonconforming lots. And subsection H1 allows, as of right, if you meet all current setbacks. And the current setbacks are 20 feet. We will not meet those. So we have to go to subsection H3. And under H3, the provided, 240-91H3A provides that if the proposed new dwelling does not comply with subsection H1A, which requires conformity with all current use and setback requirements, then the proposed yard setbacks must be equal to or greater than the yard setbacks of the existing structure. The existing structure is 9.0 feet from Ocean Street, 16.4 feet from Fifth Avenue, and 2.5 feet from the East Lally Side Lot Line where the garage is located. The proposed house would hold the same front yard setbacks, the nine feet to 16.4 feet, and would reduce the degree of nonconformity in the East Lally Lot Line by increasing the side yard setback from 2.5 feet to 3.6 feet. Actually, I'd looked at maybe moving the property back a little bit, on the, the house back a little bit on the property, but there is a, an existing septic system right behind the property, which works perfectly fine. And so we'd kind of abandon that idea. It would be a needless expense. And furthermore, if you've visited the site, by keeping the property, the structure where it is, it lines up perfectly with the property next door and kind of keeps that street seen. 240-91H3B requires all criteria in subsection H1, B1, 2, and 3 be met. H1, B1 deals with lot coverage and provides that all buildings and structures do not exceed 20% of the existing lot, 20% of the existing lot coverage, whichever is greater. The existing lot coverage of 2,665 square feet is 26.6%. And the proposed lot coverage of 2,659 square feet is 26.6%. It's a slight reduction in square footage, but the same percentage. H1, B2 deals with floor area ratio. You cannot exceed 30% of the, or the existing floor area. Gross floor area is 20.8% within the allowed limits of the zoning ordinance. And H1, B3 requires that the building height not exceed 30 feet or two-and-a-half stories. We are proposing a two-story structure, which is approximately 16 feet 6 inches to the highest plate. And then Section 240-91H2C requires that the proposed new dwelling not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing dwelling. Although the new structure will not be in compliance with current setback requirements, it will lessen the degree of the nonconformity on the, on the property, to the property next door. Being slightly smaller in size and on a somewhat smaller footprint, the proposed dwelling will slightly reduce the lot coverage and floor area ratio. Architecture of the home fits the neighborhood. It will comply with today's building code requirements. There will be no increase in bedrooms from the existing dwelling to the proposed dwelling. The lot's similar in size to lots in the neighborhood. And the fact that there's no increase in bedrooms means there's no increase in the intensity of the use. And as I stated earlier, the proposed location of the new house will align with the location of the budding house at 62 Ocean Drive, which is kind of key for the neighborhood to keep the flavor of the neighborhood. So I suggest to you, since the applicant's proposed new home lessens the degree of nonconformity, meets the lot coverage requirement, meets the gross floor area requirement of the zoning ordinance, you can find that the project does not derogate from the spirit and the intent of the ordinance. Further, that the new home is not substantially more detrimental to the public good or the neighborhood affected, since there's no change in use, size and architecture fit with the neighborhood, and it would bring it all up to current code. I'll be happy to take any question the boards may have.
Yeah, very quick question. I might just be missing it in the information. So we have an existing conditions site plan, correct? And it appears, just on the drawings, is the, does the new structure be, I'm trying to figure out, does the new structure move from existing condition? Or is it being sited on the same foundation?
It's, it's not the same foundation, but it's being sited on a very similar footprint. It's just minor.
It looks, I mean, from the drawings, it looks above the same?
Just almost exactly the same.
So that's my confusion, is where exactly is it going to sit on the lot?
Well, it meets, the, the two front yard setbacks are going to be held.
Okay.
And then on the, as you're standing on, which street is it?
So if you're on Fifth, is it coming closer to Fifth, or is it moving, how is it moving?
As you're standing on Ocean, looking at it, the property to the right, we're going from 2.5 feet to 3.6 feet. Do you have the proposed house plan?
Yes, elevations and floor plan.
Yeah, but there's also, there's a, an existing conditions plan, and then there's a proposed location of the house plan?
I don't think.
If I may approach?
Yes, please.
Okay, so it's a shift.
Yep. Just a minor shift.
Which increases the setback here.
Which makes the reduction in the size of the home.
Okay.
All right. So it becomes less conforming in that corner. Everywhere else.
More conforming.
More conforming.
Less nonconforming.
Less nonconforming. But exactly, keeping the setbacks on the other sides.
Okay. We just didn't, we didn't have that there, so, thank you. Appreciate it.
Want me to leave this?
No, that's okay, but maybe if we can add it to the packet.
All ready then? Any other questions?
So the, your presentation submits that the garage is grandfathered in prior to the 1985 zone.
Actually, prior to the 1956 zoning change.
Okay. And the sunroom, which was subsequently enclosed, is undated?
1996.
The, well, yeah, the sunroom was enclosed, created in 1996. There was a prior renovation in the, let me see, between '76 and '85. If you look at the aerial photos, between '76 and '85, the prior owner built the second garage and attached the house in the second garage to the existing garage. In 1996, when my client brought the property, she converted that second garage, which was between the original garage and the house, to a sunroom, and permits were pulled for that.
Okay, that's right, okay.
Could you just go over the lot coverage one more time? I got confused by the numbers there, the percentages and so forth? And what's the allowed right and what's proposed?
The, for the lot coverage, we're allowed 20% or the existing lot coverage, the greater of. And the existing lot coverage is 26.6%. It's actually 2,665 square feet. Proposed lot coverage is 2,659 square feet. That's six square feet less, but holding at 26.6%.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So a quick question, is, is, the reason we're here is because you have an existing nonconforming lot that is going to be demolished and replaced by a similarly nonconforming lot? But there's no, you're not encroaching any further or in violation of any of the requirements. Is that a good summation of it?
Yes, that's pretty, pretty accurate. It's actually, the nonconforming structure is what we're taking down on a nonconforming lot.
Correct. But you're replacing it with a similarly nonconforming, but you're not increasing the nonconformity. In fact, in one area, you're reducing.
Lessened it, yes. If we met all the current zoning setbacks, we could do it as of right, but we don't.
Understood. Thank you.
I don't have any questions for a change. Let's see. If we have no more questions, I'll open it up for public comment. Do we have anyone here?
Can I speak from here?
No, you need to get up in front of the microphone. Then if you could state your name and address, please?
My name is, my name is Jim Walsh, 146 Fourth Avenue. I'm three houses away and fully support Anne's, Anne's request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Horn. I'm at 141 Fourth Avenue. I live in the same block as Ms. LaFrance, the applicant. And she's been a wonderful neighbor ever since she's moved in. I go by there every day to go down to the creek, and the property is well-kept, and she's a wonderful neighbor. And myself and my wife, Celeste Vazina, are speaking in support of the request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horn.
Hi. Hi, everybody. My name is Scott McDonald, and I own 62 Ocean Drive directly next to Anne. It's my property line that you see when you see the pictures up here. What I wanted to tell you was that Anne has been a fantastic neighbor. And what she has proposed is nothing but an improvement on the property that's there. She has my absolute support and my family's support. Thank you.
Thank you. I also have two emails. Oh, there's more.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, my name is Richard Alger. I'm a Sandwich resident, but I lived in the home for quite a while. And as far as the, when the garage was built, I own the property that is very consistent with that garage, that I can attest to, was built before 1950. It was, it's basically the same garage, only I had wooden doors that you had to open. And we called it an outbuilding, but, you know, it's used as a garage, and obviously, there's an overhead door, but it is consistent with prior 1950.
Thank you. I understand you're also a member of the, of the Historic Commission of Sandwich?
Historic Committee, yes. I've been on the committee for approximately 13 years on the Sandwich Historic Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, we have two emails. One from Rhonda Topham. And she's at 175th Avenue, West Hyannis Port. She is in favor, I believe. She doesn't use the word "in favor," but she definitely supports the project. Here's another one from Jane Welch. She's at 175th Avenue.
Wait a minute, this is subject property.
Why does that have the same, oh, that's the subject. Thank you. Okay, so the Welches are at 158 Fifth Avenue, and they are in support. So that means Rhonda Topham is at 62 Ocean Drive, which someone else was just speaking to, and in support. There we go. So that is what we have for public comment. I would move that we.
Make a motion to close public comment?
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any further discussion on this?
I don't think so.
I think it's pretty approvable.
I found the Zoom function, if you want to. I'll take you give it a go if you want. With regard to special permit number 2023-027 LaFrance, pardon me, Section 240-91H3, nonconforming lot, developed lot protection. Anne LaFrance has applied for a special permit pursuant to Section 240-91H3, developed lot protection, demolition and rebuilding on nonconforming lots. The applicant seeks to demolish the existing dwelling and construct a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling. Proposed project will result in a reduction in the existing lot coverage from 2,665 square feet to 2,659 square feet. And we'll have a gross floor area of 2,875 square feet, where 2,995 square feet, 30%, is the maximum. Subject property is located at 175th Avenue, Hyannis, Mass. Existing dwelling has a front setback of 16.4 feet, another front yard setback of 9.1 feet, and a rear yard setback of approximately 2 feet. The existing lot coverage is 2,665 square feet. Section 240-91H3 requires a special permit for all demolition and rebuilding projects if the proposed demolition and rebuilding cannot satisfy the criteria under Section 240-91H1 as of right, but the following criteria must be met. The lot coverage must be 26.6, where there is a 20%, 20% maximum. 2,659 square feet, 2,665 square feet allowed. Floor area ratio 28.7, where 30% is the maximum. 2,875 square feet, 2,995 square feet allowed. Building height 19 feet 6 inches to top of plate, where the 30, 30 feet is the maximum. For all special permits, the board is required to make general findings pursuant to 240-125C. The board should review the evidence presented by the applicant's staff and members of the public, and after weighing such evidence, is encouraged to articulate if and how the evidence contributes to each of the following required findings. Number one, that the application falls within a category specifically accepted in the ordinance for a grant of a special permit. I find that Section 240-91H3 allows for the complete demolition and rebuilding of a residence on a nonconforming lot. Number two, site plan review is not required for the single-family residential dwelling. Number three, after an evaluation of all the evidence presented, the proposal fulfills the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and would not represent a substantial detriment to the public good or the neighborhood affected. Further, Section 240-91H3 requires the board to find that if the proposed demolition and rebuild cannot satisfy the criteria established as H1 as of right, then the board may allow the demolition and rebuilding by special permit, provided that the board finds that. Number four, the proposed yard setbacks must be equal to or greater than the yard setbacks of the existing building. I find that the proposed rear yard setback is greater than the existing rear yard setback. Number five, that the proposed lot coverage shall not exceed 20% or the existing lot coverage, whichever is greater. I find that the existing lot coverage is 26.6% and proposed lot coverage is 26.5%. Number six, the floor area ratio shall not exceed .3 or 30% the existing floor area ratio of the structure being demolished, whichever is greater. I find that the existing FAR is 28.7%, and the proposed FAR is 29.9%. The building's height in feet shall not exceed 30 feet to the highest plate, and shall contain no more than two-and-a-half stories. Based on the evidence provided and elevation provided, the proposed height is 19 feet 6 inches to the top of plate. The board is also asked to find that the proposed new dwelling would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing dwelling. Per the testimony of Butters, we find that that is the case. Those are my findings.
Mr. Chairman, may I suggest an addition and an amendment?
Sure.
In number four, where we have the proposed yard setbacks must be equal to or greater than the yard setbacks of the existing building, I would suggest we add the proposed front yard setbacks, plural, are equal to the existing set, building setbacks. We just address the.
They are equal to rather than must be.
Well, it's just not in there.
You're just stating the condition.
It's the front yard, front yard.
Oh, front yard setbacks.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if we could add?
The proposed front yard setbacks are equal to the setbacks of the existing building.
Okay.
And then in number five, we actually calculated the lot coverage at 26.6%. Staff has it at 26.5. I think it's just a rounding issue, but if we could make that 26.6, I, I don't think anybody. I don't think anybody's going to raise that issue. Thank you very much.
I have another question here, Mr. Chairman. Do we have to find that the garage and the breezeway are part of the total nonconforming structure existing of 2665 square feet?
I think by evidence, we, it can be assumed, I don't know if we have to find it, do we?
Well, there's evidence presented that the garage is.
Predates.
It's unknown when it was.
Correct.
When it was there.
Correct.
Okay, just a thought.
It does predate the records that are available, correct, so?
Correct, yeah, we couldn't find any record of it, frankly.
Right. All right.
Okay, well, I will second your motion to accept the findings. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And you have conditions?
I do. I have suggested conditions number one through six. Have you reviewed these? Are they acceptable?
The only comment I would have on your findings, you had the floor area ratio is 28.7% and proposed floor area ratio is 29.9. And then in the conditions, it states that. I just saw the.
Three, number three.
Number three?
Yeah, floor should not exceed 28.7, so if we can change that to 29.9.
In number three?
Yeah.
So modification to number three, to read the total lot coverage of all structures on all lots shall not exceed 26.6% and the floor area ratio shall not exceed 29.9%.
Nine.
Percent. And that is review for staff memorandum dated October 3, 2023.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, you move to accept those conditions?
Make a motion to accept the conditions?
Second.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. Good night.
Appreciate it, thank you.
We're going to see you again or are you leaving?
Couple of weeks. Actually, on November 8.
You're in for the next case, but.
Where are we here? Bay Shore? Bay Shore. Let's do this. Is it?
Do you go down? Do you drive by everyone? Do you?
Oh, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Oh, I heard all this motion. Okay. Appeal number 2023-028. 132 Bay Shore Road LLC has applied to modify special permit number 2002-95 to allow the applicant to alter and expand the second-floor living area. There will be no increase in footprint other than the extension of a covered stoop at the front entrance to the dwelling. The existing floor area is 2,125 square feet plus 765 square feet of unfinished space. And proposed floor area is 3,401 square feet. The subject property is located at 132 Bay Shore Road, Hyannis, Mass. As shown in a separate assessor's map, 325, as parcel 1080. It is located in the Residence B, RB Zoning District. You may proceed.
Perfect. Good evening, I'm Marion Rose.
Oh, yeah, who's going, who wants to? Denise, Denise, and the regular members, Mark, Erin, Paul, and myself.
Perfect, we'll start again. I'm Marion Rose from Singer &amp; Singer in Dennisport. Good evening to all of y'all. I'm here on behalf of Stacy O'Vannas and Matt O'Vannas, who own 132 Bay Shore Road. I'm hoping tonight that I don't say Bayview Avenue, which is where I live in Wellfleet, but I'll try to remember that as we go along.
Is your microphone, is your microphone on?
Yes, can you hear me? I should get a little bit closer, thank you. Perfect. As stated, we are seeking a special permit under the Barnstable zoning ordinance 240-125 subsection C to B to amend 2002 special zoning board of appeals special permit decision. The work is to alter an existing waterfront, single-family dwelling by altering the second floor and partially altering the roof line. The proposed work will not alter the dwelling's footprint other than the front stoop, as discussed, will be about 23 square feet. The work will increase the gross floor area of the second floor. The property is located in the RB Zoning District and is undersized. It's roughly 10,117 square feet, existing, where 43,560 square feet is required. Lot width's nonconforming, it's roughly 79 square feet, where 100 feet is required. The existing dwelling is conforming as to all setbacks and is located outside the 50-foot buffer zone to the resource area, Lewis Fay. The existing dwelling is conforming as to lot coverage. It's 84.4%, and it'll just increase by that, the effect of the 23 square feet, where 20% is allowed. It'll remain conforming as proposed. The existing floor area is 2,125 square feet with over 700 square feet of unfinished space. And as proposed, the gross floor, the gross floor living area will be 3,401 square feet. In order to complete the redevelopment, the applicant is seeking a special permit from the Board of Appeals in accordance with the Barnstable zoning bylaw. The board is authorized to grant a special permit upon first making findings that, one, the application falls within a category specifically accepted from the ordinance for the grant of the special permit. Two, that the proposal fulfills the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance. It would not be substantially detrimental to the neighborhood or the public good. And three, that the site plan has been reviewed and found to be approvable in accordance with Article 9. The applicant respectfully submits the proposal meets all of these requirements. First, the application is within a category for which a special permit is allowed. The prior work was allowed by special permit back in 2002. And that decision specifically provided that any expansion of the footprint or area would require permission of this board in the form of a special permit. Two, the proposed alteration and expansion are not substantially more detrimental to the environment, the community, and the historic character of the neighborhood. Here, the proposed work is almost entirely within the footprint of the existing structure and involves expansion of living space in the existing second floor. We don't anticipate any negative environmental impact. And this is substantiated by the fact that the work as proposed has been approved administratively by the conservation agent. The height of the proposed structure will remain conforming. It's 24 feet existing. It's anticipated to be 29.2 feet proposed. The proposed structure will be in keeping with other recently renovated homes in the area. I'd like to flag now, Anna, if you would. It's page seven. We have a slide that's part of the architect's package, and it shows photographs of houses in the neighborhood. Um, no. I think it's this, it's the one with seven pages. It's the second, third one? Page seven, seven. And again, we're 132 Bay Shore. You can see on this slide, and I have printouts if it's easier to see, you know, if you'd like for me to pass them out. But 134 is the top one on the left, so that's directly next door. It's comparable in terms of size of lot and also size of the house there. It's roughly the same size as the house that the O'Vannases are proposing. 116 Bay Shore is also, actually, scratch that, I'm sorry about that. 116 is the house that is similar in terms of size and lot size. 134 is the direct butter on the other side, as you can see from this map. It is on a larger lot, but the owner of that house has provided us with a short letter of support, which we'll get to in a minute. 145 Bay Shore is roughly the same size as 132 Bay Shore and is roughly the same size as well. 131 is smaller and across the street. But if you look at the general impact of the neighborhood, these houses are very similar. It's Barbara Batello of 134, who has issued a letter of support. For these reasons and those below, the proposal, we believe, is not detrimental to the environment, the community, or the historic character of the neighborhood. We've reviewed the conditions as proposed by the staff, the town planner, and those are all acceptable if you all vote to approve this project. Thank you.
Good to know, thank you.
Oh, let me introduce these strangers that are at the table over here. Chuck Rollin is the engineer on the project. He's happy to answer your questions. And also, Marjorie Wiki is the architect on the project.
Hello. Well, we'll go to public hearing, public comment. And you mentioned Batello, and I have that here. And she's at.
She's at 134.
134. Right there, okay. And she has no objection?
Correct.
And I don't see many people out here in the audience that could possibly be here for comment. So that would probably exhaust all the public comment. I will move to close.
Second.
Thank you, Mark. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so what do we think of the project?
Can I ask a question?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Essentially, there's no change in the footprint except for the front, where they want to put a stoop out there.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So essentially, what they're doing is building up in the water side of the house.
Yes, they're, as existing, the second floor is more evy than. And so they're increasing in some areas the height of the roof, so the living area.
From the street side, the visual of the house doesn't change in terms of the roof, correct?
It changes somewhat, but not much. I mean, I have the elevations here.
Architects is here, we can always.
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Good evening, everyone. So as Marion was mentioning, the look will change somewhat. The top of the roof will be about four and a half feet taller than the existing one. Currently, there is a finished portion of the second floor and unfinished space, so we will be finishing that unfinished space.
That unfinished space is in the water side, though, right?
That unfinished space is actually in the front.
It is the front, okay.
Yeah.
And how far will a stoop come towards the street?
So it will be only five inches and three quarters coming forward from the existing wall.
Okay.
So still conforming as to front setback?
Correct.
That was sort of my question, how far that was going. And I was struggling to find the original 2002-095 special permit, but it is essentially, it was because we called, the board called out for full buildout at that time, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And that just, that one thing necessitates, everything else remains conforming?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? I'm surprised I don't have more questions about this myself.
It's all good.
Especially you guys came, they got to answer one question. So would anybody like to make findings?
Herb?
Herb, sure, I'll make findings. Okay, in the case of 130, appeal number 2023-028, 132 Bay Shore Road LLC has applied to modify special permit number 2002-095 to allow the applicant to alter and expand the second-floor living area. There will be no increase in footprint other than the extension of a covered stoop at the front entrance to the dwelling. The existing floor area is 2,125 square feet plus 765 square feet of additional, of unfinished space, rather. And the proposed floor area is 3,401 square feet. The subject property is located at 132 Bay Shore Road, Hyannis, Mass. As shown in the assessor's map, 325 as parcel 080. It is located in the Residence B Zoning District. I move that we accept the following findings from the staff report dated October 3, 2023. This application does fall within a category specifically accepted by this chapter. An evaluation of all evidence presented at the public hearing by the petitioner and interested parties as it relates to the fulfillment of the spirit and intent of this chapter without substantial detriment to the public good or the neighborhood affected. I think you've shown that quite clearly. The site plan has been reviewed and found approvable in accordance with Article 9. Herein, subject only to the issuance of a special permit. Site plan is not required. And four, the proposed alteration expansions are not substantially more detrimental to the environment, community, and/or the historic character of the neighborhood than the existing building or structure. Also, you've shown that quite clearly. Would, okay.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and you already, you already said that you've reviewed the conditions?
Yes.
So.
I learned.
I was about to ask you that. So.
You have conditions?
You have conditions?
We have conditions one through five, again, from the staff reported dated, the staff report dated October 3. And you've already said that you agree with those. So do I have a motion to accept those conditions?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. And appeal number 2023-029. And Paul is recusing himself, so, good night, Paul.
Good night, Paul. Everybody, I was going to be right behind you guys. I got some good news for you. I think you have to.
I already noted that we were looking for a more detailed plan.
Yeah, I understand, that's forthcoming.
Okay.
The, so I just wanted to, you know, I, right now, the owner, I mean, or the tenant, Ned Crosby, and I just met with a group of about 10 of the neighbors. We seemed to have a very productive conversation. They did want to walk the property. We agreed to that because it's not a very, it's a very reasonable.
Let me read this into the record first.
Okay, that's a good idea, I want to open the.
So Ian Crosby Boat Works has applied for a special permit pursuant to section 240-94A and 240-94B, change or expansion of a pre-existing nonconforming use. The applicant seeks to change the use from a landscaping business to a boat storage business. The applicant proposes to store up to 75 boats on the property. The applicant also seeks to construct an approximately 30-foot by 80-foot structure covered with a clear membrane to be utilized for the storage of wooden sailboats. The subject property is located at 140 Osterville, West Barnstable Road, Osterville, Mass. As shown in assessor's map, 120 as parcel 051-002. It's located in the Residence C, RC Zoning District, and the Wellhead Protection WP. is located in the Residence C, RC zoning district and the Wellhead Protection WP overlay district. I will assign all the regular members, of course, Paul's gone. And I will assign Denise.
And Manny.
One, two, three. I should sign Manny as well. So everybody present. Okay.
So David Lawler, I'm gonna be requesting a two-week continuance on this matter. We came here purposely, I had heard that some neighbors, we didn't know who they were, were gonna be, had concerns. Obviously, it's their home area. This is a property that is subject to actually a court determination that it's pre-existing non-conforming. And we met with the owners of the homes and back, and they, very cordial. And they had a lot of concerns. I think we dealt with virtually all of them except for maybe one, and they want to walk the property. My client is in a rush to try to get this done because winter's coming and we want to store boats. But, and we are working with the engineer to get an updated plan. And we hope to be before you, and I hope actually to have the neighborhood in, in support. I can't guarantee that, but that's the intent and the hope. But we seem to be on a, a good, you know, a good place. And I would just ask that the Board agree to continue this and set us up hopefully early on the agenda next two weeks.
Yeah, the next meeting's October 25. How does that look?
It's Zoom, right?
It is pretty full already. There are five items on the agenda.
Oh, we had six today even though, well, now two have dropped out, but, or continued.
I make a motion to accept the attorney's proposition to forward this for two weeks.
I would second that.
Just before we do that, just.
It's okay schedule-wise.
I, I just wanted to make one comment, and just as a, as a precursor to coming back. Me personally, I'm definitely wanna, gonna wanna see full sign off from the fire, you know, from the fire chief, and I, just like some way in from.
Just, just so you know, we went through informal site plan.
Okay.
There was absolutely no problem with, I, I'm an officer of the court. I'll represent that.
Okay, fair enough.
There seemed to be no problem. I mean, there was conversations that we would have to, you know, they would kind of go through and, you know, work through the issue. I mean, this really is a, a change of use issue. I mean, the structures are all within the legal setbacks. You know, the, the only, the only issue would be, as you pointed out, Mark, Mr. Hanson, the, you know, would be the fire truck, but a fire truck can easily get up there. And we have restrictions. We, we're not looking to store anything bigger than 30 feet. Most of them are sailboats, you know, the, the, we have seniors of 25.
Sure.
Low boats. I mean, and we, we want to be super respectful to the neighbors. At the same time, we have to store boats, and we all know that storage of boats is a problem on Cape Cod and.
Especially wooden boats.
Yeah.
It's happened before, so that's why we mention it, so.
So, yeah, it certainly has. I was there. But, but I, I do appreciate that, Mr. Webb, with respect to accommodating us in two weeks. Because it's gonna get cold quick.
Don't say that.
As long as it doesn't rain.
So.
That from the record, again.
So final vote then?
So we have, we have a second on my motion. All in favor?
Are you gonna second that?
No, I think we have a second already.
You did, I think, Herb.
Yeah.
I did, didn't I?
Did.
Again, who's paying attention? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
See you in a couple of weeks.
See you in a couple of weeks. Thank you. Think you guys are done, right?
Oh, on Zoom. Yeah. Okay. Any correspondents that we need to review? No matters not reasonably anticipated by the chair? Anything to bring up?
It looks like she has, yep.
Do you want to talk about the 2024 schedule?
Not really.
Well.
Who was, wasn't it Paul who was most vocal about that? And now he's gone.
Are we starting on the, on the one in person, one Zoom? Are we still doing that? Is that still a thing? After January? Except for January? Okay. Okay. So.
It doesn't sound like anything would be accomplished, but because those, oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Those are already scheduled and the meeting, the rooms are already assigned, even though that's months away. It doesn't appear that there's much we can discuss about it unless, I mean, this is, we've had, you know, zoning board meetings in the small conference room over there, and it, it never goes well. There's just not enough room.
But I think it's important to have more in person because these diagrams are very hard to read.
Oh. Another problem I would have would be if we could start getting, you know, hard copies of the.
Staff report?
Staff reports and everything. I know that you're, the town must be saving a huge amount of money, but just with the mailing, but.
And the speed of the internet would be helpful. I, you know, again, Paul, before he left, he did propose that we go in person full-time. He was in favor of that as I am. I'm ready to move to full-time. This is a different environment when we're face-to-face versus, we talked about it last time.
I, I think we're gonna struggle with that through the winter.
You what, Mark? Sorry, Mark.
I, I think we're gonna struggle with that.
Why?
Because we have a chair that's not here half the winter.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Well, can we do, can we, what do they call it? A buy? Can we have somebody on the?
No, there's no partial Zoom. Jim?
No, not at this time. We still can't do hybrids.
Why is that the case?
It's leadership's direction at this moment. They're trying to refine the, the, they're trying to refine how they do hybrid. Right now, town council does hybrid. It takes a lot of manpower, is my understanding. There's, we get Zoom bombed from time to time. There's, there's multiple people monitoring it. And our, our communications team is, is down a few people as well. So.
What work to have one person be zoomed in versus the whole group be zoomed in?
Yeah, so no one would be here filming, basically, right, if, if we were all remote? So right now, that's, that's the direction that we've been given is there, we don't have a hybrid option.
Well, who makes that decision?
That would be the leadership town council and, and with cooperation with town manager.
You know, this is a very visual, you know, exercise in looking at setbacks and things like that. It's very hard to do on a little computer. I mean, I have a big computer, but.
I just have concerns that you've got. Mic's not on. I just have concerns that we have a population, a significant portion of the population that leaves in the wintertime, especially through this time period. And I think it still provides them an option to be involved on and, you know, have the, have the presenting attorneys determine whether or not they want to, you know, do that in person or not.
And a hybrid would be good too, because you could have, even if we had an in-person meeting, I think there's a lot of people who might want to, you know, public comment, be able to speak without coming all the way in here.
Certainly get a better read on the more difficult cases. But I don't, I don't think we've been doing a terrible job with that. I think we've been trying to accommodate as we can, but.
So looking at these dates real quick, are we, I know January was gonna be Zoom, Zoom, 17 and 31.
Sorry to interrupt, actually. So the January proposed dates are available for in-person, either of them, except for the 10th, which is the one that's crossed out with a green symbol. That would have to be remote, but it's also an option to do it remote that day. So just wanted to clear that up.
So can you, so is, so the, 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 the stop sign is meaning that there's no business that day?
The stop sign is town holiday, so closed. The green sign means that the hearing room is booked, but there's a potential for a Zoom meeting. So the star, the two-star January dates, the hearing room is available those dates. So they could be in-person either date.
Okay.
And I would move to hold both of the January meetings in person, the 17th and the 31st. Anybody have a problem with that?
I don't think the chair is.
Right. Oh, should we have Jake make this motion? Okay.
She's just filling in the information. She's giving, giving us the info. Man, Mark, what do you think?
I, I think we should just wait for the chair to be back and have Paul be here, and we can just, it's a small, you know. I, I don't think we've been doing a bad job with the one-on-one-off, and I think if we have opportunity, we should continue that.
You mean the Zoom or the in-person?
Doing both. I think both works well.
Zoom works well with some things.
Some things, but I think people can, I think the attorneys can anticipate what's gonna be difficult and what isn't. And obviously, certain things, they're gonna want to present in person, most definitely. And some things, honestly, some of these tonight could have been presented by Zoom. It would have been fine.
Yeah.
The only thing is that we, I, I noticed tonight, I don't know if something changed. Almost all of the site plans and things like that could, can't Zoom them, can't anything like.
Yeah, the laser fish is very difficult.
Very difficult to read.
I find that to be the case as well.
Even when it's up here, it's blurred. We can't read setbacks. We can't see, even when we expand it, it's, it's hard to read. So I don't know if something changed there. That would be my only. I know that has nothing to do with the schedule. I apologize, but it just.
Just a complaint.
A complaint. It's an observation.
Could we discuss maybe having hard copies of the packages available for pickup or on request, maybe? Because there's, some of the plan-intensive ones. Oh, yeah, when, when there's 90 pages of backup data, yeah, that would, I would definitely not want that.
Just the staff report might be helpful. I don't think we need all the fill though that is here, but sometimes to move quicker to the, we're always, we're always struggling to go back and forth with the staff reports, especially if there's two that are being proposed, like Attorney Kenny did tonight, where he's got a variance and he's got something else, you know, it would just be easier to have it in front. Please.
I think we can conclude that there's room for improvement.
All right. Well, should we make a motion to adjourn?
I would, I would definitely entertain that. Do I have a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
It's not even 10 o'clock.